Good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, April 5th. It is seven o'clock straight up. Wow, it's starting on time. We're gonna have a regular meeting. And to get started, we'll stand up, do the pledge of allegiance, and get the meeting started. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We would have known the silence to honor the military, firefighters, road workers, and sheriff's deputies as they serve our community here in Abra. Thank you. Ms. Edwards, can we have roll call, please?
Justice McLaughlin.
Present.
Justice B. Bell.
Present.
Justice McLaughlin.
Okay, so first thing on the agenda is the approval of amendments, but we have some new people in here, and I just want to have a little conversation that if you look at the agenda, I don't have printed, not having as big a crowd, I didn't collect that many of them. You can share, but you will not see on the bottom of the air quotes in the meeting comments by citizens, residents, sorry, on there. We have a little bit difficult way of writing the meetings. So if we're talking about something you wanna, got a comment on, you have a question, like you're back in school, if you think back that far, some of you might have a little heard from them as I do, raise your hand. You'll have to give your name for the record, but you can ask your question, make a comment, try not to be too long-winded, and don't cuss me. So, just kidding. Anyway, thanks for letting us know. So first thing on the agenda is the review and approval of prior meeting minutes. And we have a few of them, because last meeting, we didn't do it. So there's two, four, five of them. It'd be the regular meeting for the first of March, March 1st, and the work session for March 1st. And then we had a special meeting, March 3rd, that was the end of the budget. That one's in there. And then the last, the last meeting, the regular work session for the meeting on March 15th. So they're all in our packets. Everybody get a chance to look at them.
Yes, I'm okay.
If I can make a motion to accept the listed, we just listed, the meeting minutes?
All right, second.
Thank you. Tracy, have roll call, please.
Justice McLaughlin.
Yes.
Justice B. Bell.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, next is...
The pass. The pass sign.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
Those five, all five of them.
You want to stand up, say, "Second?" Go ahead, which two, please, gentlemen? On here, last one we have is, there's a nation two part-time firefighters, it's twenty-five. Is that covered? Okay, physical officers' reports next. Tracy, you have the floor.
Okay, so, I'm on the top, I'm on the top table, I've got the, um, your packets, I gave all your preparation report, and two other reports. I'm just concerned about, um, some of the bills being paid with, we're, they're coming in, but I'm not getting them out as fast. So we haven't had any issues yet, whether they're gonna say we can charge you fees, because I'm concerned mostly with stuff like DPNL, veteran, that I'm going ahead and paying them online, but you trustees have not, um, did a resolution to say it's okay for me to pay for them online. I don't know that the auditors will question that, but maybe we should do, protect ourselves, say that I'm allowed to pay online, so it's okay.
Is that what you said, with DPNL and the...
Those aren't the only ones. Sometimes, like HSI, they can be doing security, they'll ask if we pay online, but that's, 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 you know, extra value, because they like to be paid. They give us a, how you say it, they'll let us pay later because, sometime because, you know, we don't have that available right away, so we can, they'll send us an email that says, click here to pay online. But like, people like veteran, like the water bill, like the, um, I think that's not a standpoint, standpoint, AES, or DPNL, veteran.
So have you had any classes in your stuff that you've been to in training? Is there some way for us to do this, so you can do that, I mean, it's a whole...
I mean, no, there's no, there's nothing that's standard for the auditors, Meg, that, do you have a resolution that says, oh, another thing where, yeah, that I can pay?
Is there a way we can reach out to the auditors, ask them?
Yeah, there is, but I just, that, this is a concern I want to get you guys to deal with it. I am paying a lot of the invoices online that you don't have to, that you don't have to sign off with a check.
Well, I'm willing to work with you, let's come up with it. If there's a way to do that, I mean, I made a note here, if there's a way to do that, let's do it.
Okay, I just want, yeah, I just want you to know that that's why you haven't been seeing a whole bunch of them, because AES, we have eight, we have eight DPNL bills, basically. That's, that's the biggest one.
So, I can't, I, I think that the first, the first thing to do is to reach out to the auditors office and ask, is that something we can do? And then if, if it is, then, uh, you know, which ones do you want to do in continuous places, online? And which ones we have to mail?
Yeah, I'm just trying to find a way that you guys don't have to sit there and sign up.
I, I, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, well, can we do, maybe we can do a blank P.O. for veteran or something, and cover all...
Well, you usually do that, I usually do that for veteran. And, and, you know, we've got about, I mean, we just do what the auditors say. Those aren't the problem, it's the elements that we have issues with. They use several line items, they use several different things, like they're building from, it may, it may use several different things, so we don't know how to use that.
So you will need to contact the auditors office and find out.
I mean, I've been contacting, I just didn't know what, what you guys want.
If you can do that, then just let us know, if that's okay? If we can go ahead, and we just...
All good.
Other than that, I just, I just need you guys, when I, you know, I send, practically every day, I'm sending out invoices. I get them in the mail, I have to get them in the mail, I'm sending them right out as soon as I get them. Sometimes they don't have, but a few did, but we gotta process, we gotta go through, that went PR, that was this, then I gotta get them in the mailbox, be used on. So right now, you've been doing them about once a week, maybe twice a week. And so I, I just want you to know that they're not getting behind, it's just that we're not getting a whole bunch right now, which is kind of good. I think we've been keeping up with them.
I like where we send an email, check your inbox, or I'm sorry, a text, or something, to say that they're in there, because sometimes we have a lot of abundance, and sometimes we don't want to, we're...
Because I'm not getting them on the weekend, on the weekend, it's a computer malfunction.
Right, yes, yes.
That's my other concern, is we're working it, and I know we're working it, but some getting behind on, um, on the weekends, when I try to get a lot of the sonic wall issues.
Well, hopefully Doug, he's putting in place something until we can get the replacement for S.A.
I have a feeling that we're having some issues with our email, too, because I keep getting that, about certificates.
Well, just let me know, and I can, or you can always let Doug know, like, you know, for that spam email, just let him know that what issue you're having, and...
We're getting in contact, and then...
Um, you might even want to reach out and see if anybody else is having a problem, so if they are, then they can kind of do a...
So has anybody noticed that the, the backup thing pops up awful lot, um, the computer parts?
Well, I wouldn't say it's really a lot, um, I just look at it as it's just checking to make sure it's safe. Because I got it, I noticed today, and I'll just kind of read it to see what it's talking about.
Other than that, um, it says, I know you guys don't have time to look at the report, but I just got to read, but, um, and I said before, if you look at that report, the appropriations report, that one, there's, that's a variance, I said, the longer you don't see a negative in there, you do it, the last column. So the variance is how much we got. So, you know, like, let's look at the road and bridges. Oh, no, let's look at the property front, because it's a town, you know? If you look, they only have fourteen thousand dollars. So everything, I mean, if you wanted to do that...
Grant door.
You only got fourteen thousand dollars. So you're gonna have to move stuff around.
Right.
So that's, that's how you kind of use that lot of money. Other than that, that's, that's what I had, and if you guys have questions, we'll do
Motion to accept the...
Well, I have a question. Um, so with the ARP, I, I noticed there was, we got, you know, about something, about the ARP funds, like, last week? Oh, was it something that we have to give a report?
So I, we haven't used any money, and so I haven't looked into that. I guess, with everything that went on last year, I didn't keep up with any of that. I just got the money, put it in an account, and was gonna use a grant writer, and she was gonna manage to pay off people. But I don't think it ever happened, so I never kept up with it. So I started trying to catch up now, you know, I'm busy. And, and so that's when I found out it's with the SANS registration.
Right, and then the verb, take control of that.
And now, I don't think, well, I'll have to read on a little bit more, I don't think we have to report anything, I haven't used any funds yet, and this is April 30th deadline, but I'll have to look on it. And they continually send out emails, make sure we make that deadline, so I'll have to look at it a little bit closer. I keep a book with everything in it, so, um, I, I go back and check. I've also taken some training they have on webinar, to try, and they have a lot of stuff out online that you can do, just look on it, and follow the webinar, it's already been presented.
And how much is, um, we currently have for that?
How much do you have in the account right now? So right now, we only have the, um, the first, the first column.
Three thirty-eight.
Okay, it says three thirty-eight, so...
Yeah. So this is the amount of money we will have to look at when we sit down to discuss.
Right now, but if you look in the, the next, the third from the last column, that's what we're supposed to get told.
It was six hundred seventy. Right, but we only get half.
We got that first, and this year, we're supposed to get that, and that's why that's in there, that's why those estimate revenue, if you look in SANS, they estimate revenue, that's what we estimate for each of them.
Right, so that's, the second portion, that other three thirty-eight, is based off of what the SANS goes through correctly, right?
Well, that's, we gotta, as soon as we update, I don't know, the, the fact is, I don't know, if they go back and look at it, understand the possibility of real, and we have to make sure we keep up with that.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're on the same page as far as the amount of money we're looking at spending when we sit down to allocate, with what's going to go.
You don't have till 2024 to appropriate the items, and 2026, they haven't spent. So you still have, you still have till 24 to appropriate.
We don't want to wait that long, do we?
No, no, I don't. Okay, so make a motion to accept the physical officer's report, please.
I'll second.
Justice McLaughlin?
Yes.
Justice Bell?
Yes.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is second session, and that's going to be admitted or deleted, I'm doing that. So next thing is old business, and if there's nothing on the list, do you have any old business they want to discuss? So I guess I do. In the work session, we talked about doors, and a couple buildings, and building out there, that's the, of course, is the one on Union Road. And for, for the record, we do have three contracts. The assistant chief was so kind to spend his time, I didn't have time, spend his time to meet people there and get us some quotes. And any communication with them gentlemen, Mr. Wilcox, did you have a lead time with the doors and door?
I don't believe, the other ones have them on there, what, twenty-two weeks, twenty weeks? I don't believe he specified. There's the twenty weeks and twenty-two weeks.
Okay, so I'd like to proceed, proceed with going within force of law, approval to proceed with this for the Union Road, across the Hudson, get that door used, get that door used, and use the building. And Tracy, I want to get the money out of, writing down, two oh two one, seven six oh, seven four oh, with four zeros. And not to exceed, at this point in time, not to exceed five thousand, that door. So that's the door itself, the installer, and two remotes. Now, do you understand that electrics could be done by others? And that's not part of, that's not part of this contract, but we will work on getting that taken care of. I have some electrical friends, that need to look at that, the electrical control box in that room is the old screw-in fuse types that you see in the old homes, that are not really, uh, safe, so we'll be upgrading that, and getting electric in there to do some more.
And make a motion to...
I'd like to make a motion to spend not to exceed five thousand dollars with door and door, on the code that I gave, I'm gonna repeat the code. And then, in that motion, can I get, Mr., since you communicated with them, Greg, can I get you in contact of, and you all ready to proceed, please?
I'm gonna find it out here, twelve, fourteen weeks.
That's the shortest time to go with them.
Oh, a second.
Would you go on that?
Justice McLaughlin?
Yes.
Justice Bell?
Yes.
So that's our new old business motion. And thank you so much, partner, probably, for helping with that. If you have any other old business they want to discuss?
Uh, I do want to, we talked about in the class, in the work session, about scheduling the meeting, initially, we lived at the 12th, we're gonna change that to the 13th. Captain Flag, you can check your calendar, it'll be six o'clock here, and that would, that meeting is to address, um...
Is Benjamin?
Yeah. Is to address, yes, a whole lot of things. It is to address, just get a special meeting to discuss strategies, working, working with the zoning, the code, and the sheriff, on drugs, trash, both ways, possible after-hour drinking houses, illegal car repair shops, in residential areas, speeding vehicles parked with all four tires flattened, vehicles parked on the street, they have been inoperable for over several years, pit bulls, pigs, hogs, chickens, and that's just a name of them. Um, and we're gonna be talking about how we can work together to address these issues, because I know a lot of the, our citizens are having these issues, dealing with, living next to somebody that has these issues, and we want to start addressing them. So we're gonna just change that from April the 12th to April the 13th, at six o'clock.
Yeah, we, Captain Flag, and, I guess Tracy, last year, at some point in time, there was a big binder, binder produced of all these homes. I never walked away with a copy of it, I know it floated around. Did you, do you have a, did you get a copy of that for the records or public? It might be in Steve's office. Yeah, I remember, there was a lot of time and effort put in that book, and maybe we need to bring that back out, and...
I still have it.
Fantastic.
And I followed up on it a couple times.
Well, I, I...
But we, we gotta get somebody in the position to move forward on that side of things. You know, we, we kind of tag teamed that with code enforcement, and, you know, went door to door together, and it's, you know, getting that mechanism in place to, to send the code violations through the court, and get them to be, you know, successfully dealt with out there, that's where we're coming up short.
So we're moving on in position against some people hired for that.
Okay.
And we're making progress, and we do want to move forward with that.
Okay.
As we talked about it, it hasn't been done, and we want to make a difference, so...
And you made a really good suggestion, when we had that conversation about working together with code enforcement, it will make, uh, code enforcement, it'll make a definite difference, working together, as opposed to working separately.
Yes, because, I mean, we can go out on a call, that's a violation on the street, that we can deal with, that can be drug up into the yard, and it's no longer something that is a violation of revised code that we would deal with. So if we don't have that simultaneous, you know, you can't do this, and you're not gonna do this, we're just spinning tires, so...
Thank you.
Speaking of that, we've, we've had conversations before, and I think it was at SoCal, was it, Hagan, Mr. Hagan, Hagan?
Hey.
We talked about a bus on Hagan before, remember the conversation?
Yellow bus, bright yellow bus.
Old school bus.
Right.
It's not plated, I've had more phone calls about it, it is now out to the edge of pavement, across the sidewalk. Now, I know that's not, it's the sidewalk, the third street, I know it's not highly used, but it is, off top of your head...
Like bus or trash, or the actual buses over the sidewalk?
Yes.
Okay.
Does that make us any better to be able to tag it somewhere?
You, we can cite for parking on sidewalks.
Fantastic, please. That'd make the neighborhood happy, if you can do that. And then, again, let's work together on that. I, I don't want him to go and push it back up in the yard, and I can see him, you know, so...
Right, right. So, but as long as he's unlicensed and on private property, that's gonna have to come from the zoning or code side of things, but on the sidewalk, you know, we can issue citations for parking on sidewalk.
So, but let me ask you, well, you're probably gonna get on Mr. Tor, but real quick, because I got a text today about somebody parking their vehicle on the grass. Um, and I think it's a, it's this specific house, it's a turnover, constant turnover, but they always seem to drive up on the grass and park vehicles on the grass, and this is like in the residential part of the township. And I was wondering, isn't there something in place that they have to park on a C minute?
There's nothing in revised code that requires that, and every jurisdiction's different, some people allow parking on grass, some jurisdictions require a minimum of gravel, some jurisdictions have outlawed gravel, and it has to be concrete or asphalt. But, but out here, unless it's in your zoning or code enforcement, that'd be the only place that, there would be something that could be enforced, and I don't believe off the top of my head there is. I've looked through that a couple times, so, you know, it would be a matter of, the only, the only parking resolution we have in place for the township to deal with parking issues, deals with the length and the width of vehicles. So there's nothing that says a car has to be moved in a twenty-four hour period, there's nothing in the, in the law that requires a car to be moved in a five-year period. When we talk about cars becoming inoperable, the ORC is very clear on what that means, it's not an assumption that it's inoperable, that means there's a transmission laying in the street, that there's an engine block hanging out of the front of the, of the vehicle, that is what makes up inoperable. If you can start proving inoperability based on those things, then you can, you know, start looking at other factors as far as flat tires and things like that. Really, absence anything else, a flat tire is gonna be a knock on the door, hey, you need to blow up your tires. And if they do, they do, if they don't, they don't.
So, because I, this is somebody who did work on the, the zone code, and that person told me that, is it, it was code, right?
I think it was on the zone.
Was it on, one on? Was it only one on, uh, that said that they did pass something that state your vehicle must be parked on pavement. So if it's on the grass, and I guess it's a continuous thing, um, then something could be done. Cause there was somebody on a valid drive that was parking like in the grass, in their front yard, and it wasn't, sometimes it was altered. So, we might have to look at that.
Are they saying the township passed something for that?
Uh, 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 from what she told me, she said yes, because they did have a vehicle removed, uh, because of that reason. So I just wanna make sure, so I'll check and see where she, where that's at, so that we can all be on the same page.
Because what we had done with the resolutions, uh, a few years back, is kinda pull everything out and, and go through what we had on file, had them reevaluated by the prosecutor to determine what needed changes, what was good to enforce. And, uh, we ended up with three or four. Um, one's noise, one's parking, and then, uh, there's one other one in there, I think. I'll pop ahead.
I have an issue because, uh, my driveway's not paved. And I, I have no intentions of spending any more money to pave my driveway, to park my vehicle cars in my house, as long as the drug dealers can run up and down the street. So I'm not going to invest any more dollars into that to pave. But if I get a ticket for parking in my driveway, we're gonna, we're gonna have an issue. I mean, seriously.
Well, you live like out this way, right?
Yeah, I live right here on this street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I own another property on this street that also doesn't paint.
These houses are closer together, what I'm talking about. So, that would be an issue. Because when you start in the inner part of the town, in the inner, the plaque area, once you start driving on that grass, then it makes a big mud hole.
Oh, I, I, I totally agree.
And then it becomes an eyesore, and then-
I mean, I'll park my, no longer, just for reference.
You know what I'm saying? So, we have to be mindful, and also be mindful of where we're looking at. Because you live out, you have a lot more land, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Whether or not they're rural or in a plaque, if they're built a zone residential, they fall under the same rules.
Right.
It would be, if it was zone agricultural, had a different zoning classification is where the rules change, not just because you have a bigger yard or something like that. Cause I park my front yard, I don't have a front yard.
Well, I don't, I don't park in my yard, um, but I have two houses on this street, and neither of them have paved yards, I mean, a paved driveway. One has, well, the gravel hasn't washed away yet, but it will. We bring it in often, but across the street, there's, I don't know, five vehicles that aren't tagged, that don't have tires on them, that are up in a yard that's owned, I guess one little patch is owned by people that don't even live on our street.